Thank you all. Not a typical attendance. But thank you all for attending. And I'd like to call to order the Wynter Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. We are currently in the Harvey Hearing Room. Denise, call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Tascieneri.
Yes.
Counselor Costigan.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Swope.
President.
Counselor Aiello.
Here.
Counselor Duras.
Here.
Vice President Belcher.
Here.
President Luteri.
I'm here. Thank you.
I'd ask everyone to please rise and please stay risen after, please. Vice President Belcher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for two Wynter citizens, Jay Guthro and Barbara Flavin. Mr. Guthro was a teacher in the Wynter Public Schools for over three decades. He touched the lives of countless children. He was a devoted family man, an avid golfer, and our hearts go out to his family. Jay will be missed very much. Mrs. Flavin was very active with her church as well as the town and served on various boards, committees, most notably the old advisory committee from 1992 until the change of government in '05, and then stepped right into the Citizens Advisory Committee in 2005 and served until 2020. Bob was also an intricate member of the middle high school building committee as well as being involved with Miller Field Committee. We wish Bob's family all the best with this tough time, and I now ask for a moment of silence for both Mr. Guthro and Mrs. Flavin. I also welcome Mr. Costigan as his first regular meeting as a town council. So thank you. Do have minutes from the May 7th meeting that have been circulated. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Counselor Duras. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One abstention, the ayes have it. Public hearings, we have none. We will go to general information recommendations. So today, we are, most of us are all here, for the swearing in Samantha Farino as Wynter's newest sergeant. I am extremely grateful for this opportunity to introduce Samantha. She's an incredible asset to our town, lifelong resident, incredibly nice human being, and an incredibly good officer, and did amazing on the sergeants' exam. So congratulations, first of all, to Samantha. I'd like to ask Chief Goodwin to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sam, congratulations. Congratulations to your entire family. Council president pretty much said it all. Fantastic officer. My only advice is, as you climb the ranks, you leave a little bit of fun behind every time. So I hope you enjoyed your years as a patrolman and a detective, but congratulations, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I'd ask the town clerk to step up to the table and swear in. Sam?
No pressure.
I do solemnly swear in a firm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon me as the sergeant of the Wynter Police Department according to the best of my abilities and understand in accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the charter and ordinance of the town of Wynter, and the rules and regulations of the Wynter Police Department to help me God.
He used to enjoy doing police work, but he got a little tired of it. Yeah, this is our husband, Richard. On our radio.
Thank you, Chief.
The new relationship she has to Rich, Carina?
Got it.
Honor and love.
Good to see you too, James. See you later.
Congratulations.
Did you really?
All the time. It's like, yeah.
Good to see you. I will.
Rich, 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 can you grab the elevator?
Yes.
Can you grab the elevator?
All right. Moving on, public comment. First round of public comment.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Karina Campavasso, Precinct 3. I'm here this evening with members of Mothers Out Front Wynter. You can see us in our shirts. Mothers Out Front is a group that advocates for policies to fight climate change on the national, state, and local levels. Basically, we are trying to work to mature a livable planet for our children and for all future generations. Unfortunately, this future is in grave peril at this moment. We see this right here in Wynter with rising sea levels, and we see it across the country and across the world with the unprecedented extreme weather events and a shifting climate that is changing ecosystems across the planet and endangering the survival of all species, including our own. I don't mean to be toothed down. Anyway, we're here tonight to express our strong support for the creation of a Citizens' Advisory Council on Climate. This is a small step we can take on the local level to explore what could be done to fight climate change and protect and preserve our town, which I know is the primary concern of all of you who serve on the town council. In addition to the creation of a Citizens Advisory Council on Climate, I wanted to mention another small step we can take on the local level besides upping our game on reducing solid waste, promoting recycling, transitioning away from fossil fuels, and encouraging electrification, which my colleague Christine is going to say a few words about in a minute. This measure is observing NO-MO-May. NO-MO-May is a movement that was started in England that encourages people and localities to not mow open spaces for the month of May. This allows flowers to bloom and provides food for pollinators, which are so important to our food supply. I understand that it might not be practical for the DPW to not mow public areas around town for the entire month of May. However, reducing the amount of mowing to the bare minimum or waiting to mow until as close to the end of the month as possible would help our ecosystem and hopefully save the town a little bit of money from the DPW. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carina.
I'm Christine Kinsey from Mothers Out Front Wynter, and I am a co-coordinator with Mary Alice Sharkey of this group. It's an environmentally-minded group, and you can see us mostly wearing blue t-shirts on Barbara and another Mothers Out Front t-shirt. So it's nice to have some of our members here to be supportive. And Mary Beth Pickard will speak in a few minutes about some of our events to support our goal to limit solid waste. Another one of our goals is the future of clean heat, and we emailed the council and are asking to be added to the June 18th Town Council meeting agenda to present on moving from gas to clean heat. Thank you.
Yes, Tracy.
Hi, Tracy Honan, Precinct 5. Also a mother, I'm sorry, a member of Mothers Out Front in Wynter. We'd also like to express our support for the town council's adoption of a municipal opt-in specialized building code. Some of you might already have heard of this building code. I know Tony's very familiar with it. It would establish requirements for energy performance for any new construction with the goals of, one, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and, two, promoting the cost-effective transition to all electric buildings, thereby transitioning away from non-renewable fossil fuels. Adopting the opt-in code would protect the health of Wynter's residents while helping the planet at the same time. While Mothers Out Front of Wynter does not take a position on the 3A issue, we would like to point out that adopting the opt-in specialized building code might discourage developers seeking to exploit 3A by building shoddy multifamily housing as quickly and as cheaply as possible, along with other measures, which may help encourage more sustainable measured development in Wynter. If anyone would like to know more information about the opt-in specialized building code, please let us know. We'd also be willing to present more information during a future council meeting specifically about the opt-in building code if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Todd Sackel, Precinct 2. I agree with her. I'd like you guys to take a vote on that tonight because that will absolutely slow development down, so can you do it now?
Yes.
Hi, Mary Pickard with Mothers Out Front. I think I'm Precinct 3. I didn't prepare a speech, but just wanted to recognize some of the events we've done with Mothers Out Front. One is our pumpkin drop that we do in October, whichever it's, a lot of pumpkin waste that people would be putting into landfills and get them put into, where they get recycled into.
Compost.
Yeah, compost. Usually the flacker. And then, just my daughter Poppy, by the way.
Hi, Poppy.
Hi. And our swap shop we do annually. We're thinking about doing it twice a year now, which helps divert a lot of solid waste from landfills into the hands of other parents and other people, not just children's things, for people who need it, as well as big brothers, big sisters. So, do you want to hear of us? So, would you give your support?
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda.
Hi, very briefly, we as an organization...
Just name it precinct. We know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're not calling me?
I did. No, no, no. Just say your name and precinct.
Okay. I was just going to say your name.
Say it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Alice Sharkey, Precinct 1. I don't have my hearing aid. That's how old I'm getting. But, besides that, I just wanted to say that we have been, as an organization, we've been together for over six years, and we're just generating more and more of people who are interested, especially when we're hearing all of the climate issues that are going across, especially this spring, about all of the hurricanes and tornadoes, the destruction. And that isn't just something that's just happening. That is happening because of all of the atmospheres that are really being impounded by the poisonous gases that are going up because of the fossil fuels. So I'm not here to lecture, but I'm here to say, please think about it, and please, if you see issues, please bring it. If we do get a new council for climate, that you will bring it to their attention so that we can generate a better opportunity for all people, especially our babies and our young ones that have an opportunity for a new life. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Cheryl Howard, Precinct 2. This is concerning 3A. I'm a no to 3A, but I would like to ask the council if you could please schedule a public meeting with our department heads so we can hear what they have to say and their opinion on 3A and the ramifications of 3A if you should vote yes. I'd like to have them in one room. I'd like to hear what they have to say. They are our roots on the ground, so to speak. I also want you to consider, if you're planning on voting yes on 3A, that you include your street. Please contact the planning board, let them know you volunteer, and have your neighborhood be part of that, because if you don't want it next door to you, you shouldn't want it at all. With that said, I urge you to vote no. This law is egregious. It has been really chaotic. I feel like this law should be repealed. It's all wrong, as well as the behavior of our leaders at the state level. Their behavior has been all wrong towards us. It's been disappointing, a disappointing process. The state aims to take our voices away when it comes to zoning, and that's not acceptable. Their threats and accusations are disheartening. We deserve better. We deserve respect. And I feel like if we allow this imposing law on us, it will only begin here. It won't end here. So I think we need to say no. I think we should join Milton. I think we should stand with them. Biolytic is free with our concerns for Wynter. We should fight the constitutionality of this law and, you know, say no. Loud and clear, please. Let's see. I'm very nervous.
You're doing good.
So, our region is doing so much building, and Wynter's doing our part, the region is doing their part, and to force more with 3A seems maniacal to me at this point. There are apartment buildings everywhere. This allows, this law allows the developer to have power in our community, and our community is too small to give up any power, because any development will impact everyone. It's not just going to impact a small neighborhood, it's going to impact everyone. So I do believe that the housing that's being encouraged with 3A, apartment buildings, tiny bedrooms, multiple units, does not appeal to families. You know, if the state wanted to contribute housing for families, they should be creating homes, neighborhoods, parks, financing, encouraging ownership, encouraging, you know, offering tax incentives to help their citizenship to state, not building these apartment buildings with tiny bedrooms. I'm sorry. It just is not, not a nice way to create housing for people.
You could just wrap up.
Yes, I will. So please vote no. Please consider Wynter being how small we are and that we're not capable really of contributing any more than we already have.
Thank you.
Silly Mallorys, Precinct 5. It's been a week since the last meeting, so have we received an update from the secretary?
I don't know.
Excellent. So we're still at 882 units that we have, a minimum of 882 units that we have to zone for. A couple of things that stood out last week at the meeting. A question was brought up by Mr. Duras, and he had asked them about our local control, and the consultant kind of spoke both ways. He said, yes, you still have local control. However, if the guidelines change, and I don't know if they'll change, but they've already changed five times, you're going to have to comply. If you want to create, if you want to make any changes to the zoning, the underlying zoning, you need to get approval from the state to make any changes. So really, you don't have local control in that instance. The second piece to that is, we continue to hear about, oh, let's put it over the CBD. We're already doing it. We're just going to throw some lines around it. Well, that's paper compliance. And what that means is, we already have the buildings there, but guess what these developers can do? They can go into those pre-existing buildings. They don't have to touch anything, and they can start cutting it up and putting as many bedrooms. There's probably a limit on units because of square footage, right? But can put as many bedrooms because there's no restrictions on bedrooms and no restrictions on occupants. There was an example that Diana had mentioned. I believe it's 303 Harvard Street in Cambridge. There was a 16-bedroom building, and it ends up being like 50 bedrooms. And that's on the existing foundation, existing building. And so paper compliance is compliance. Don't feel like you are checking a box off. You're not. You are still allowing developers to come in and do whatever they want to that property. I understand there's height setbacks, et cetera, but you're still opening it up to the state. This is a land grab. This is a land grab by the state. The Haley administration continues to find loopholes that they're going to cover up. They're continuing to make things a little bit easier for communities. Apparently, the secretary said that there's funding coming. Still haven't seen anything for infrastructure, safety, our schools. So there's a lot of promises being made to try and fool people over, but let's see if it actually comes true. I suggest that the town council reach out to the secretary as soon as possible and see where our number is, because right now, we're still at 882 units that we're going to be zoning for.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Celestra Vera Hewitt, Precinct 1. So I have a lot of thoughts on 3A, but I think what we're dealing with right now is the unknowns. I think that people are conjuring imagery, whether on the no side or the yes side, right? The yes folks, that it's going to be the most beautiful, bucolic situation and ideal and family-sitting for the field, and the no side is envisioning things like the silly is mentioning. I was not able to participate in last week's meeting. I did view it. I didn't come away with a whole lot more information, other than, I understand we have our second round of consultants working on it and doing some investigation, but what's missing is an understanding of the intent of town council. And I think a lot of the chaos and the acronyms comes from the in-between and what we don't know. I did participate in the Republican meeting where Jim was there and where our representative was there, and at that point, I did suggest that we put together and consider a community advisory council. I understand that all the work on this is not being done solely in these forums, and I think that if we have a cross-section of folks from either side, and those in the middle and those that have some understanding of process, can kind of inform the, you know, inform the process, get an understanding of the intention, and help town council and town planning board form their intention around this, that would be great. We don't know what will happen after, I have no understanding of what will happen after the consultant comes back. Does that mean it will be put to a vote? Will we be privy to a referendum? I think understanding some of those intentions and some of the process and being engaged in formulating the process will allay some of this acronyms. I think people are, you know, ready to go to fisticuffs in the street, and there's so much not said and a lot of it's happening in our own heads and in small businesses, and that's not value-added. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Silas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Dowd, Precinct 1. I attended the planning board meeting last night, and they're anticipating having four or eight weeks of discussions with the consultant.
So?
I don't think it's necessary. We did have a planner onboard that gave us, I believe, three areas to put this on in order to comply with 3A. I'm suggesting that you revisit that person's plan and hand it to the planning board so that they can say to you guys, this is the plan, let's have it done. I think there's going to be a lot of yelling and screaming if we drag this out. I don't think anybody wants to be in a zone like that. No person in this town wants to be in a zone like that. Everybody wants to have a single-family house, but if you have to aspire to get one, you have to be good at it. But we should accept that plan, put it into effect, so that we then can vote on it, whether it's yes or no. Doesn't matter. If it's a yes vote by the council, then we'll just have to have a town-wide vote. I don't think all these discussions are necessary. I think everybody knows that's probably a five or six to one difference between no's and yeses. That's one subject, please. Thank you. As far as seawalls, and I've mentioned it over the course of years, a half a dozen, eight or 10 times, in front of this council. The one at the south side of Wynter, when they filled in the Shirley God, and then they filled in the tideland, and then they put a 20-foot wall up on the island, and then they filled in the tidelands, it's causing a lot of coastal erosion, so to speak. And then the DEP wants us to take down or not use the berm anymore because they're in favor of the plovers. I think that's going to be very detrimental to the houses along that shoreline at some point. We only have to look back to Sandy 12, 15 years ago to find out what can happen when an area is not protected. The other wall going north, you can see the steel in a lot of places. Seawalls on the ocean were meant to last 30 to 50 years, I believe, as I recall, and I don't remember that seawall being built. They did do some work on it, but they only did the work on the opposite side of the seawater. So something has to be done before something very bad happens in that area. There's a lot of utilities under that road. If something happens to that wall, I believe there's four utilities under that road, all the necessary utilities, both for the town of Wynter and for the mass water resource. I'm not exactly sure where they're located, but they're certainly there. I asked my friend who worked with the mass water resource for about 30 years, and he listed the things under that road. So I hope someone starts looking into this. I believe both are equally as dangerous as the other. So we're in for a lot of work to be done by this group that's sitting in front of me. Let's start on fixing the seawalls on both ends of the berm. The plovers are obviously more important than the people down there. I'd like to get the DEP to come down, sit with the town council, and make you guys understand why it's so important to not have a berm there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Phil Schmidt, Precinct 5. Everybody's favorite topic, 3A. So I appreciate attending last week's meeting. I, quite frankly, was impressed with the consultant. I thought he was knowledgeable. I don't know if anybody read the story in the Sunday Globe about how communities are skirting the requirements. I think that's something we should look at. I counted the room when I was at the meeting last week, which I tend to do, it was about 75 people. I'd say about 50 were a no. I'd say probably 10 or so were opposed, and there was probably another 10 or 12, like my consultant came to hear the consultant. My perspective on this, having been involved in government for a lot of years, it's a question of what's going to happen in the court. Today, I looked at the brief filed by the Attorney General. I think everybody should read it. I think you should get an opinion from your town council, what they think about it. I don't think the question is a yes or no question. I think the question should be, what's the town going to do if the state wins?
I asked my friend who worked with the mass water resource for about 30 years, and he listed the things under that road. So I hope someone starts looking into this. I believe both are equally as dangerous as the other. So we're in for a lot of work to be done by this group that's sitting in front of me. Let's start on fixing the seawalls on both ends of the berm. The plovers are obviously more important than the people down there. I'd like to get the DEP to come down, sit with the town council, and make you guys understand why it's so important to not have a berm there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes?
Phil Schmidt, precinct five. Everybody's favorite topic, 3A. So I appreciate attending last week's meeting. I, quite frankly, was impressed with the consultant. I thought he was knowledgeable. I don't know if anybody read the story in the Sunday Globe about how communities are skirting the requirements. I think that's something we should look at. I counted the room when I was at the meeting last week, which I tend to do, it was about 75 people. I'd say about 50 were a no. I'd say probably 10 or so were opposed, and there was probably another 10 or 12, like my consultant came to hear the consultant. My perspective on this, having been involved in government for a lot of years, it's a question of what's going to happen in the court. Today, I looked at the brief filed by the Attorney General. I think everybody should read it. I think you should get an opinion from your town council, what they think about it. I don't think the question is a yes or no question. I think the question should be, what's the town going to do if the state wins the court case? Or what's the town going to do if the state loses the court case? Personally, I think the state has a strong case. I've been at the last, I guess it was the last council meeting, you talked about Jack's favorite beach, Euro Beach, how we can't really do much unless we get approval from the DEP. I was at the Finance Commission meeting the other night, most, several of the council was there, talking about the problems of funding in the schools. Lisa Howard was asked, what's the main problem? She said state mandates, unfunded mandates. So that meeting, of course, was talking about the funding. I was listening also in terms of what the mandate is. We're also constrained by Proposition 2 and 1/2, which even though it was a citizen petition, state law, it's a mandate. As Chair of the Board of Health, we pass regulations because we have the authority by the state. So there's a lot of issues that are determined by the state that seasons towns have to follow. We have a housing authority. We have the Mass Pool. We have the MWRA. These are all things that are done by the state that have a cost for these communities. So to think that we're automatically going to be successful if we just say no, I think people have to look at that more carefully. The other thing I would say is, when this is a town of 19,000, we have about 12,000 voters for your precinct councils, about 2,000 each precinct. And I think it's hard to know how most people in the town feel about this. Quite frankly, I think most people aren't even aware of it, or if they are aware of it, they're somewhat knowing that there's something out there. But to propose how people are going to vote, we really don't know. Last year, you guys had a ballot question on the firehouses. The whole council approved it. Every candidate I saw running approved it. There wasn't any organized opposition. You had a website, literature, signs, forums. I think people thought it's probably going to pass, or maybe it'd be close. It was overwhelmingly defeated. So we really don't know what the citizens are doing. My feeling is, your responsibility as councils is to do what you think is right, what's in the best interest of the town. That might be that you vote against it, it might be you vote for it, but think about what's in the best interest of the town. Not about who's the loudest voices, but what you think is in the best interest. That's what you're here for. That's what we're likely to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment right now? Denise?
All right. Correspondents?
Sorry, I forgot something. I have some information for future clean heat, so if I can just hand it out. There are nine there. I jarred 11.
Thank you. Public comment, correspondents, Denise?
A letter which Casey Pratt requests to be put in the record, which it will be, that she's in favor of 3A. Would like the DC to vote favorably, the town council to vote favorably on this. Kaitlyn Barrows, again, would like her letter put in the record, which it'll be included in the minutes. Comment that she also would like, I'm sorry. She is also for the 3A. Todd Sacco sent an article in reference to a flag policy for the town council to review.
Thank you. Committee report, Finance, Councilor DeRoz.
Finance committee met earlier this evening before the meeting. We had one item on the agenda. We had Dave, am I pronouncing this right? Bisson? I'm going to go to my central Maine roots and add a French spin on that name. Dave is from Select Energy, S-O-L-E-C-T. Came before us to give a presentation about potential of leasing solar panels for the Gorman School, Gorman Fort Bank School, and the Cummings School. Some may know, I'm learning as I go as well, that we do have some solar panels currently at the middle high school. And actually, as part of the presentation tonight, we asked, he presented some statistics in his presentation tonight about costs that can be saved, green Haskhouse gas emissions that can be, carbon emissions that can be saved. So this was a presentation mostly educational for us as a committee to learn about this initiative. So there was no recommendation of any kind coming out of committee tonight. We're going to look into this further and then meet again prior to our next council meeting.
Thank you. Vice President Falchuk, rules and ordinance.
Thank you. Rules and ordinance met a couple of weeks ago to finalize a version of the short-term rental policy that is coming out of committee with a positive recommendation, and I'll have that out to the full council and hopefully on the website for public input very shortly.
Thank you. School Department report, the school committee met last evening. We discussed the budget, which was brought up earlier. That is the hot topic right now as we head into budget. Well, we're in the middle of budget season right now. We'll be voting relatively shortly. The other thing that was brought up last night was it was the last school committee meeting before graduation, which is just incredible how quickly the year goes by. High school will be graduating a week from Friday, May 31st, down at Miller Field. I encourage, well, I guess there is some sort of limit for people to go, but I'm sure it will be simulcasted on CAT. I encourage people to watch. It's a great achievement for those kids. It's a great achievement for our town. You know, there's a lot said, positive, negative, about the town here, there, and everywhere, but these kids have accomplished an incredible amount of stuff. It's just a great representation of our town. I wish them all the best, and I'm sure on behalf of the council, we wish them all the best, and I will be happily attending the ceremony and look forward to it immensely. So thank you, and congratulations to the high school seniors. Town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just a quick update on Miller Field. Staff in place, and Miller Field will be opening beginning June 1st for public access, 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and then 5:00 AM start on Wednesdays and Thursdays. We'll have additional summer hours added after June 17th when the kids get out of school, because we can't have the people on the track while the kids are in school. But once the school's over, then we'll add some additional hours, so we'll give an update on that. Quick update on Memorial Day. Obviously, we'll be having our Memorial Day celebration as standard on Monday, this coming Monday. It'll be starting at, similar over there at 9:45 at the Winthrop Cemetery, and then the services to begin at 10, similar to what we did last year. And James Allard, US Navy vet, will be the guest speaker this year. So excited about that. Revere Street Tip Project update, we've been in the town manager's blog, there's been the update on the schedule. We put that out, it comes out every two weeks. If we get any changes in that, we'll definitely put those out. Some of the business owners, i.e. the marketplace, had requested, you know, just an update with the contractor with regard to deliveries and whatnot. They had that meeting today, actually, so we got the delivery schedule set and road blockages, things like that, to make sure that, you know, businesses can still get their deliveries. There was reference earlier about the planning board meeting. I also attended the meeting last night. We talked about some dates, as we will have a joint meeting on June 4th with the planning board, not for 3A, but just to talk about the floodplain. I talked about that before. Our floodplain bylaw needs to be updated. It needs to be done by July 3rd, hence the dual meeting with the planning board. We'll do that together. Most of our 2016 bylaw is intact. There are some changes to definitions and a few minor changes, but we are required to adopt those. So we'll be in to give a presentation on that on the 4th, and then do the public hearings required by the council and the planning board, and then we'll shoot for the second meeting in June to, you know, get it voted on, so we can get it up to the state and comply by the July 3rd deadline. The other thing, the planning board, we also spoke about was the 3A. They're planning their meetings, they're shooting for June 10th at the Senior Center with RKG, and both these days were confirmed today with RKG that they can make it. And then July 16th, again, at the Senior Center to kick off the process. Obviously, the Senior Center being, we anticipate a little larger crowd, so make sure we have the capacity. The benefit to that room is that, they'll be able to broadcast live, but there's, you know, no Zoom options over there, so there'll just be, you know, discussion back and forth. People will be able to watch from home, but if they want to participate, they'll have to come down to the room, to the Senior Center. We did have a great ceremony earlier with the promotion to Sergeant for Sam Farino, but we also, I finished up the interviews in the last couple of weeks for the deputy police chief, with Police Chief Goodwin now in place. We have an opening in the deputy police chiefs. We conducted the interviews of all three lieutenants that we have. Great interviews, always impressed with the staff we have, but Lieutenant Steve Rogers has been promoted to be police chief, so he will start on, I think, June 17th, whatever that Monday is, right around there, so, or, you know, have another swearing-in ceremony in the future. So Rogers, Lieutenant Rogers will be Deputy Police Chief Rogers shortly, so happy to pronounce that. We did talk about the school override. I mean, I was on Zoom for the school override update, obviously actively speaking with, you know, Superintendent Howard. You know, this year's budget, you know, will be tight, as she announced, you know, 1.7 short this year, hoping to make it up with some prepays and some other things to make up the shortfall, you know, but that's this year, you know, to do, and that's just a level service budget, you know, to do what, you know, kind of a, we called it a foundational budget, I believe. You know, that budget would be, I think, 3.8 million, you know, so. School override, you know, it's necessary, it's, you know, something that should, you know, most towns would happen every, between five to seven years. We haven't done one since 2009, certainly long overdue. We were able to keep things going during COVID with, you know, federal money and ARPA money and things like that, but, you know, everybody should get prepared. The school certainly is working on it. Our new finance director is working, there's an override calculator that'll be, you punch the numbers in, it tells you how much you should be asking for, how long you anticipate it to last. An education stabilization fund, where you put the additional monies in for each year to allow that override to carry out as far as you can. So, you know, with the cost cutting and certainly conservative measures, but, you know, that's something that'll be certainly, obviously have to go to the ballot and the residents, and, you know, there's been some that have been successful, some that have been not successful, so, I mean, that's, you know, they heard about that earlier, you don't know how the board is going to do, but our job is to educate them and, you know, let them know why we need it and what their cuts would be if we don't have it, so. Just a quick update on the seawalls. I did drive around with Director Calla today. The seawall that was referenced earlier with regard to, you know, heading out towards Revere Beach, out of town, that is owned by DCR, so I have put a call into them and an email to follow up with DCR to find out what their process is and what their plan is to, you know, work on and replace that seawall, because as was referenced, there is, you know, rebar showing and certainly deterioration, so that would be them to fix that. We've got money in our capital plan to fix the remainder of our seawall on Shirley Street, down by the town landing. You can see a lot of it's been done, but the other half, on the other side of the landing entrance, we'll be finishing up that seawall coming up in this upcoming year. And then we are planning on a meeting with our environmental scientists and hopefully get the EP there, but on Euro Beach, we're going to advertise and post it, but we're shooting for June 8th, Saturday morning, try to meet the residents out there, give an update, what's going on, you know, what DEP is telling us, you know, what's going on, not necessarily with the plovers, but with regard to, you know, the coastal dunes and what their requirements are and what they're asking for us in the beach management plan. So that, with that, I don't think I have anything else. If something else pops up, I'll do it, but I'm sure I'll have questions, so.
Councilwoman Swob.
Thank you. President, a couple of questions. I know that Jack brought up the issue of can we build on a floodplain, which you brought up during the planning meeting. Do you have an answer to that in 3A? In other words, is a floodplain a possible zone?
Well, we have flood zones all over town. Yeah, so, I mean, yes, you've got to get your first floor, you know, there's different requirements, so there's, you know, velocity zones, there's regular flood zones, there's AE zones, whatever the, depending upon the zone, will dictate where the first floor elevation has to be. I know Conservation's dealing with a house now and TAFSAV or whatnot, where they've got to get the house, you know, completely out of the, you know, it's in a velocity zone, so it's got to get up to a certain height, so you have to put it up on stilts. So yes, to answer your question, you can build in flood zones, but, you know, they're certainly more expensive and, you know, more cost prohibitive, because you've got to get that, either stilts or some sort of helical piles or something to get the first floor elevation out of the floodzone. And that's the mandate, you know, you won't get flood insurance unless that happens and whatnot, so.
And so, for every home that is built in a floodplain, they have to have flood insurance also?
Yeah, I mean, if you have a mortgage, you have flood insurance. If you own it outright, then that's your choice, you roll the dice, but yes, it's certainly advisable.
Can you give me an idea, because I don't have flood insurance, can you give me an idea of what flood insurance is costing people these days?
I don't know. I mean, it all depends where you are.
It's very expensive. I'm sure there's people here that can tell you that, but it's in the thousands of dollars.
There's some people from the Highlands, they didn't tell me how much per month, but it's going, it's gone up $100 a year, every year for the last five years.
It's expensive.
Because I did.
And they're also doing a brand-new calculation right now, too.
Yeah, so, thank you, but I did hear that it could go up to as much as $10,000.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I would say anywhere between 5 and 10, depending upon where you are and what kind of flood zone you're in, yeah, that would make sense.
Okay, so, I mean.
And that depends on policy limits, what you're getting. I mean, there's all sorts of variables there, but, yeah.
And just one more thing. Thank you for bringing up Prop 2 and 1/2, having been on the school committee for four years, I, and I know what Superintendent Howard's going through. She's never reported a 1.7 million shortfall on a level-funded budget. That is a serious issue. And so, we need as a town to really think about how we can educate people about what this means. It's serious for us, I think, and so thank you for bringing it up.
And just for clarification, it's not level-funded, it's level-service, right? So in level-service, basically means the same, you're getting the same tomorrow as you're going to have today. Doesn't necessarily mean that because there is unfunded state mandates, as.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's level-service.
So it's a level-service budget. Councilman Munson.
Thank you, Council President. I did watch the joint committee meeting with the planning board, and I thought the consultant was impressive. He was very knowledgeable, and it was great to hear some education there. There's still some ambiguities, but I guess I'd like to know, have some clarification on some of the stuff that, I guess will come out over time, but the ability for the guidelines to change over time, and us to have to, like, play catch-up with what the state's feeling, seems to me like we would never want to agree to something that has, like, a moving target. So I would just, not sure if you are, did you understand the consultant to be vague in that way, or was he pretty concrete?
No, and I would say, you know, he answered it correctly, but it's true, and I will compare it to, you know, what was brought up earlier, right? We're a green community, so we have the stretch code. Stretch code is similar to the guidelines that are out for 3A. We agree to be a green community, we agree to the stretch code. Well, we're, we have to adopt every new version of the stretch code as it comes out, so as that code gets more restrictive, we are on the hook to do that. So the same thing will be true with 3A. It's the same, you know, as it changes, if you've adopted it, it's the same. So, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, and we have other state rules that that applies to, and the stretch code is only one example, but as the state changes the laws and changes the rules, then yes, we'd be subject to those rules. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's an absolute, yeah.
In terms of some of the suggestions and motions that Mothers Out Front brought up tonight, in terms of an all-electric opt-in building code, is that something that you've been a part of in the past?
The specialized code is relatively new. I've certainly been a proponent of green communities and, you know, the stretch code, but again, even this, I would caution, I would say, you've got to look at it, is even the new version of the stretch code that came out this past January, I believe, you know, that's, it's got some impacts, and we have to adopt that now. It has impacts on people that want to just make additions to their homes, and there's impacts on that, so the specialized code even takes it further. So I would say we have to do our homework on that before, you know, I would cast an opinion one way or another on that.
And lastly, has there been an update by the architects in terms of the proposed fire station development?
We have been working with, as far as the, you know, different locations, looking at potentially the middle school, Wildworth again, and then, you know, another site, you know, but again, the flood zones play into that, but yes, there is, and we plan on, I plan on giving some updated numbers at the next council meeting, so we'll have an update on that.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Testine here.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Councilor Swob for bringing up the issue with the current year's school budget, that $1.7 million shortfall on a level-service budget. I know Council President said that there are some things that, at that meeting last week, there are some things he has in mind that we can try to help defray that shortfall. And one of the things that you mentioned earlier, Manager Marino, is a school stabilization fund. Is there any chance we could enact a school stabilization fund on our books before the end of this fiscal year, so that we could do some of that movement with whatever Superintendent's able to save for this fiscal year, and whatever Council President thinks is identifiable to move into that fund before the end of this fiscal year?
Yeah, I think, you know, as far as identifiable, I do have a couple of ideas. It's nothing within the budget. There is no, you know, in years past, it seems to be that there was always like, okay, let's take, you know, we think we could get some money out of this line. I don't think that's an option this year, but I do have a couple of ideas. I think the stabilization fund is more for, I mean, when we create it, doesn't matter, but it's more for as we go forward after a potential override or whatever, that, you know, so when there's turnbacks at the end of the year, they're turning back money into a stabilization fund.
And nodding back into free cash, yeah.
Well, you know, you'd never really get turnbacks from the schools, you know, not just us, just in general, you never really get turnbacks. They might prepay. This way, it's much more transparent. That money is in account for the schools, conditioned by the council, like they would by the council, like they would ask us to access the money, we would give them the access and they would be telling us what it would be for. So, I, you know, it wouldn't be something that we would set up next meeting and then throw a million dollars in or something like that, that's not gonna, you know, I think what, from listening to the superintendent, her thought is that they are one point seven million in the whole on level service budget right now, she is gonna do her very best to use every nickel and dime she has in savings to do, um, prepayments on certain items that you have the ability to prepay with in your budget, so she's gonna try to shorten the, that shortfall with that and hopefully we might be able to help out in some small way to get through fiscal twenty-five. But when fiscal twenty-six rolls around next July, July of twenty twenty-five, um, there is going to be no way to, to balance a budget, no matter what it is.
Oh, there's no question that we're gonna have to go for, for an override.
Yes, and again, it's up, the citizens have the final say and, and they're, you know, like everything else, there'll be discussions, as many other communities are doing right now, for this year, for next year, for starting this July first. You know, a lot of communities were very fortunate to be able to have those ESSR funds to get them through the past few years. Unfortunately, a lot of communities used that money not very wisely and used it for a lot of reoccurring expenses, instead went to abuse it a lot for one-time expenses in terms of technology and such, did use it for some reoccurring expenses, but, uh, the, the municipalities that used it for reoccurring expenses are so in the hole, you know, and they're gonna see come September, some of the shortfalls that they're going to have and, and come July, they're gonna have significant layoffs, so, you know, we're in a little bit better position than much, than, than many because we have that, hopefully that extra year to try to sweep by, but we're not gonna be able to sweep by next year.
So, we do have, we do have about a half million free cash that needs to be allocated before the end of this.
Well, we don't have a half a million free cash, I think there's going to be some motions brought out and, um,
Some of it's be using the capital plan.
Some of that's gonna be using the capital plan, but I do have a suggestion from some money from free cash, yes.
So, that free cash will be allocated where?
It is going to be allocated for different capital projects.
For FY twenty-five?
Yes.
So, you're gonna push that into, into a fund for FY twenty-five without the school stabilization?
No, 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 it's going to be used in this fiscal year.
For FY twenty-five's capital plan, part of it is a big, uh, couple of rooftop units at the school, so, I mean, that's, I mean, we'll lay out the capital plan as you were,
Right, because they don't have the money to finish it, so we're gonna be paying some
There's a big chunk of that's going to the school with rooftop units, they're using some ESSR funds, but they need an additional three hundred thousand.
There was gonna be some money, some marginal money left from free cash that I am going to make a suggestion that we move over to their budget at a future meeting. So, that's part of my suggestion, but there is another component to it, I'm just working on it.
And my question is, without a school stabilization fund, they'll need to use that money to prepay into the next fiscal year, because that'll need to be spent before the end of this fiscal year.
They, they have money in outside accounts now that will be used to prepay expenses for fiscal twenty-five, those will all be depleted, that will help reduce that one point seven and try to get them through fiscal twenty-five. Then there will be no more outside accounts, basically they'll all be zeroed out and then hopefully with some sort of override or stuff, and we could potentially change our financial policy in terms of free cash in the future if there's a stabilization fund and we could help support that a little bit, but, you know, basically, you know, they're a bottom-line budget, we, we appropriate a certain amount of money, they spend it the way they choose to, so, um, you know, we can't, we're not gonna be able to go in and say, oh, we want, you know, an extra Spanish class, or we want an extra AP class, an extra math class, that's for their decision, but.
I'm, I'm confident that the superintendent will spend that, can decide how that, that gets spent appropriately. That's not the question, the question is, the free cash needs a place to go so it can be spent in the next fiscal year for the schools, if, even if it's just a hundred thousand, even if it's just fifty thousand, it needs a place to go.
And I've said that I have a plan with the remaining free cash that we will have and we will be sharing that plan well before the budget.
There's two more meetings before the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
It's not a lot of time.
The special meeting could have any time.
Vice President Belcher.
Thank you, Council President, um, just a couple of questions, um, the ORC votes from the Attorney General's office, have we gotten those back yet?
Not yet, no.
Can we get an update on that? I know that came up in the public comment during that, the meeting last week, but I brought it up a couple of times, it's just, I think we.
It's gone, it's just that they take some time, yeah, I mean, it's, it's frustrating, trust me, but it is, it's the process, unfortunately.
And are we still in a position where we can't have heavy equipment on Euro Beach?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then one last question, and apologies, I could have checked this, but I, I didn't get a chance to, are all of our three A materials on the website in one area, like what we sent to Augustus's office and, and everything's?
One document needs to go up, but everything else is there, and to be clear, like what we sent them was just links that are already on our website, to the charter and the ordinances, I mean, we could put those on there, too, but.
I just think it would be really good to have everything in one area for people to just click, even if it's just links, here's the zoning, here's this.
Yeah, and they wanted to read them through and through, just to, you know, highlight the areas, we also have the map that's gonna go up there as well, the rest is put up, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Ayala.
A couple of things, uh, one related to, uh, three A and tangentially related to three A, um, do we have, uh, at the last meeting, I asked the consultants if they had had a chance to calculate the number of units that we have rezoned for, uh, the sensitive waterfront, et cetera, do you know if they've had a chance?
They haven't finalized yet, they're working on it, they've gotta get with the assessor's office and then we've made contact, so, yeah, they're, they're still working on it, but they haven't finalized that yet.
That's an important number, one of the things I've heard at these meetings, as well as some of the budget meetings, um, is a lot of concern about what the impact of three A might be with respect to our municipal finance situation, is it bad, is it good? A lot of speculation in both directions. I went through the website, uh, the town website to look for documents and despite the fact that over time, the town has rezoned for nine hundred units, approximately, we don't know the number yet, that's the first part of the question, uh, it doesn't look like we've ever performed a municipal financial impact analysis, I don't see any reports there, um, and to me, I think, let's imagine three A goes away for a second, we've got those new units coming at us, one way or another, and I think from a budget and strategic planning perspective, we ought to understand what the impacts are gonna be, are there gonna be some good, some bad, but particularly from a budget impact perspective, so, um, and I, I went on the website of RKG, they actually have done these kinds of analyses. Can we get them in this contract quickly, because it's, it's germane to all of our discussions, it is a big concern, I think it's a valid concern, to do municipal impact analysis on the zoning that we've already done in this town, because that's something we can't avoid, right? And if it's bad.
Yeah, I'll have to ask them, I'm not sure it's in the initial scope, so I'll have to find out.
Yeah, but I, I think it's important to add that in if it's, if it's not in.
You can ask them for a price, for sure, yeah.
Quick one, the second one, I know you've been trying to get the transit authority to put, um, by shelters around town.
Yep.
Have they moved it all on this?
They actually reached out to me, we were playing phone tag, he called me last week, I think the gentleman I originally spoke with.
Yeah.
Uh, that program's moving forward, I don't know where we fit on the list, but they, I told you, they have a whole plan for all those ones that you said were sitting on ballots, and they wanna farm them out, but they were working on a program to do that, so I'll follow up with them, but I haven't caught up with him yet.
I was just wondering if the, the council needed to send a letter to help support what you're doing or anything like that.
We could, but I just think it's, yeah, that they've got a plan in place, I just don't know where, we've gotta find out where we fit in that.
We're gonna be talking about the climate committee a little later, uh, one of the things I know is coming up is a deadline in, I think, early June.
Yep.
On, I think it's the CZM to apply for money for municipal vulnerability, uh, reports, ours needs to be updated, ours is, is out of date by about four years. It gets back to questions that other councils have asked, um, having an updated municipal vulnerability report allows us to get eligible for FEMA, FEMA dollars and other kinds of federal dollars, uh, we're gonna be able to get that.
We'll get the application resume, yeah.
Okay.
Working on that.
That, that's great. Stormwater engineering at the last meeting, two meetings ago, not the special meeting, I had asked if, um, Director Calla was here, if, um, if we had, um, used the entire fifty thousand dollars that we had allocated for the Gerblessow Street. And PICO, uh, engineering of the, replacing for the stormwater systems, and, and he replied, yes, it was, and I asked if, what's the next dollar for money that's gonna be there? Because as I mentioned at the last meeting, this council expressed a strong desire to keep the consultant going, because I know the federal dollars haven't come yet, they may not come, uh, but I think every day we wait is more delayed, was he able to give you a number on sort of the next?
Not finalized yet, I should have it for the next meeting, but we didn't get it for this meeting, yeah.
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting? Because I think I'm, I'm just worried that we've gotta act, uh, expeditiously.
We just don't have the numbers yet, we did ask, but we didn't get them yet.
Okay, no, that's, that's great, um, and then the last thing, on the two and a half override, uh, yeah, they're pretty bad numbers, right? One point seven million is a big number to, to make up for levels, equal level of service. I was struck by the, uh, the superintendent's remarks and what seemed to be a consensus of everybody I was listening to in the room, that, um, where she wants to get to this, uh, this level of service that costs about three, three point seven million dollars more than we're spending today, is not aspirational, it's foundational, that is what should be happening in the schools, not trying to compete with other, other schools, et cetera. But, it's a, it's a real, real crisis. What I don't understand is what's the process, given you got a school committee and you got a council, what's the process that has to follow before we can move to put something on the ballot? Do we have to wait for the school committee to move first? Is that the way?
Yeah, they didn't even ask for it, yeah.
Okay, and do we have a sense of whether that's coming to us for consideration?
I think you'll see it coming in the short, near term, yes.
Okay, all right, that's good, so they vote?
And again, I think that, the, you know, the process would be, they would vote, they would, they would have meetings about it, I'm sure they would have public meetings about it, they would vote, they would come back to us, we would have public meeting about it, it would go on a ballot, whenever, whenever it went on a ballot, it would, we would have the ability to say, okay, this is, if it is passed, it would start July first of twenty twenty-five, it wouldn't, you know, if it passed in whatever month it was, it wouldn't start that next quarter necessarily, it would, it wouldn't start until the year.
So, if we got it on the November ballot, it might not start till July first and next year, something like that, okay. And then the, the packaging and the numbers in terms of how much to ask for, that comes out of the school committee and then we either yay or nay it, or we have an ability to modify it, how does that process?
Uh, the school's gonna, you know, would, would potentially ask, I'm sure the council would be, um, have input on that, but you would be voting on the school's recommendation.
The school's recommendation, okay. I think that is it, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. CDI, yeah?
Uh, yes, they did have a meeting, uh, we're still on for the, um, June fifteenth, Pride Potluck, uh, Saturday, uh, over at Ingleside, uh, they're also, uh, planning a few events around, uh, I think it's tree planting, um, uh, you know, Dave Green and Ramona Cooper, that anniversary coming up, they wanna do something around there, and also the, um, they're doing a, um, beach cleanup day, I believe, um, that was also planned, I just don't know the date, though, John, do you know the date?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I'll get the date, but they're planning, I've got an upcoming, you know, we'll get that out on the website, it'll be in my town manager report, but, uh, they're also doing a beach cleanup day, so.
Very good. Update on policymaking boards, Board of Appeals met on eighty-two Main Street, this has been continued, it's been a continued hearing for more information requested. Board of License and All Liquor License was applied, applied for by Silver Coffee, Coffee Shop, formerly Seashore, Seaside Coffee, which was denied, Shoreside, formerly. They have amended license to a, they have amended their license request to a wine, malt and cordial license, which will be heard at the June twenty-six Board of License meetings. Valenciano, formerly Rosetti's, applied and were approved for a brown bag license. Planning Board one eighty-one, one eighty-three, Winthrop Street owners requesting to renovate building to seven one-bedroom units, that has been continued as they must also apply with the Board of Appeals. Board of Health, I do not have anything, uh, Mr. Schmidt is here, if he has anything to add.
Sure, uh, thank you, Mr. President, so Board of Health will be meeting next Tuesday, uh, in this room, six thirty, um, have, preparing agenda tomorrow, I anticipate we're going to approve, um, modifications to the tobacco sales regulation to comply with state law and we're going to be passing, I think, um, the revised, uh, litigating of restaurants that's gone through a public hearing, comments from the public, um, comments from Inspectoral Service, I think those are the two big items.
Thank you. All business, elementary schools potential roof and, uh, solar project, we did discuss that, it is going to remain on the agenda and it will be on the next agenda on June fourth. New business, discussion of floodplain maps, um, Town Manager spoke about it in his Town Manager Report, this is something that we're going to have to file for an extension, correct?
No, we shouldn't, if we can get, meet that June fourth and then June sixteen, that'll allow you to vote before the third and be covered.
We're already advertised, we're in the process of being advertised, so we should be all set for that.
Yeah.
Yes, because you do not want flood insurance expiring on July third. Uh, Councilor Ayala?
Are we gonna get a full presentation of that?
Yeah, we'll do it on the fourth, but I'll get the documentation's up beforehand.
Yeah, if you can put it on the web.
I've got the, uh, we've got a draft of the model bylaw that, uh, the Attorney Sipola had worked on, and then we, the maps, obviously, PDF, but we'll have, you know, paper copies, we get those updated maps from, uh, the FEMA, so.
So, if you can put those on the website so everybody can see them on the front page.
Thank you. You got it?
All right, uh, we have a proclamation for Juneteenth, Council, Vice President Belcher.
All right, the proclamation reads, whereas Juneteenth is a historic celebration that commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African Americans in the United States and the recognition of the end of slavery in Texas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, and whereas Juneteenth is a day to honor the contributions of African Americans to our society, to celebrate their culture and to recognize the ongoing struggle for racial justice and equality, and whereas on Thursday, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, President Biden signed into law S four seventy-five, the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, which designates Juneteenth National Independence Day as a legal public holiday, and whereas the town of Winthrop understands the impact of hate and discrimination all too well as evidenced by the hate crime that occurred in our community on June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, that took the lives of David Green and Ramona Cooper, and whereas the town of Winthrop recognizes the importance of celebrating and supporting the African American and Black communities and acknowledging that we must continue to work towards full equality for all members of our community, regardless of their race and, or ethnicity, and whereas, in the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Winthrop Town Council extends its support in the celebration of Juneteenth and encourages all residents to join in the commemoration and recognition of the many contributions of our African American and Black neighbors, friends and family members. We urge our community to come together to support and uplift the African American and Black communities in Winthrop, to stand in solidarity against all forms of racism and discrimination, and to work together to create a more just, equitable and inclusive society for all. We call upon all citizens to celebrate the diversity and strength of our community and to continue working towards a future where everyone can live without fear, prejudice or discrimination. Further, be it proclaimed that in recognition of the federal holiday of Juneteenth, the town council authorizes the town administration to fly the Juneteenth flag on the holiday, June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
There's been a proclamation made by Vice President Belcher, it's a second to the proclamation, second by Councilor DeRoz, any discussion on the proclamation? I will say I am going to support both these proclamations, but I also believe that we need to, I, I'm, I'm hoping in the future we'll be able to eliminate this flag policy and just respect people for who they are and not have to raise a flag for certain people and not for other people, so, uh, I'm hoping that motion comes soon and, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye for the motion, opposed, no, the ayes have it, proclamation is granted, Councilor DeRoz.
Thank you, Council President, um, I am proud to offer up a proclamation regarding Pride Month, recognizing June as Pride Month in Winthrop. I move that the Winthrop Town Council approve the following proclamation recognizing June twenty twenty-four as Pride Month in Winthrop. I'll read the proclamation and then I've got just a couple of personal comments I'd like to make on this. Whereas the Winthrop Town Council recognizes that Juneteenth is, excuse me, June is Pride Month, a time to celebrate the diversity of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and other gender identities and sexual orientations, LGBTQIA+ is the common reference, uh, community. Whereas the Stonewall riots, also known as the Stonewall uprising, which took place in New York City in June 1969, marked a turning point in the LGBTQIA+ rights movement and inspired a new era of activism. Whereas in honor of the 1969 Stonewall uprising and subsequent first Pride March in New York City in June 1970, millions of Americans across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the nation regularly celebrate the advances made by and diversity of the LGBTQIA+ community and raise awareness of the ongoing struggles of the community each June. And they are ongoing. Whereas the town of Winthrop recognizes and celebrates the many contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community and strives to continue to create a welcoming and inclusive environment for all residents and visitors. And whereas the town of Winthrop recognizes the accomplishments of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as the first state in the nation to legalize same-sex marriage in 2004 and the Commonwealth's continued promotion and fostering of the LGBTQIA+ community. Whereas the federal, uh, as proclaimed by the federal government, we recognize the valuable contributions of LGBTQ+ individuals to American society and culture and we reaffirm and commitment, our commitment to standing in solidarity with LGBTQ+ Americans in their ongoing struggle for full equality. And whereas, as Speaker of the House, Bob DiLeo stated in Governor Charlie Baker's 2017 Pride Month proclamation press release, quote, "Pride Month is an invaluable opportunity to recognize the gains we've made in ensuring civil rights and to celebrate LGBTQ culture while reflecting on the work ahead of us." Now therefore be it proclaimed by the town council, uh, the Winthrop Town Council that June 2024 shall be recognized as Pride Month in the town of Winthrop and that we encourage all residents to join in celebrating the LGBTQ+ community and further be it proclaimed that in recognition of Pride Month, the town of Winthrop authorizes the town administration to fly the LGBTQIA+ pride flag to represent all members of the LGBTQIA+ community and all of their intersectionalities from June 3rd, 2024 through June 17th, 2024, consistent with town policy.
There's been a proclamation made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Belcher. Discussion on the proclamation. Counselor DeRozan.
Uh, just a couple of personal anecdotes on this one. Um, everything I just read resonates for me personally. I distinctly remember the day when my now ex-husband and I, uh, wanted to get married prior to 2004 and we were denied that ability. And I distinctly remember when he and I and both of our parents and our siblings sat in the State House in the balcony, watching over the proceedings as the vote took place. If you've never had the feeling that someone gets to vote on whether you get to marry the person you love, believe it or not, it A doesn't feel good and B, we're sitting at a time where several states and two U.S. Supreme Court justices have made motions and comments to call into question that ability to marry the person you love. So the comment I'll make is this, LGBTQ Pride, don't mistake it as an opportunity to just celebrate the gay community. This is a celebration that everybody can love. Who they love should be able to marry that person, should be able to visit them in the hospital, and every other right you should have because you should love and be married to who you choose to love and be married to. Thank you very much.
Counselor.
Thank you, John, for that. Um, sorry, I'm supposed to say Counselor DeRozan. So, but no, I mean, that means a lot. It's, 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 it means something to hear a real story about that. I obviously support the LGBTQ community and, um, I have absolutely no problem with flying the pride flag, okay? But that being said, I have an opportunity here where in October, 1,300 Jews were killed and slaughtered. And I came up with the idea to raise the Israel flag. And I brought that up at a council meeting and I actually took the flag off the table because I thought it would be contentious. I just wanted to make a statement, okay? I couldn't get a consensus of people on the council to actually speak up against the anti-Semitism that was going on, okay? In fact, I got people equating it to the people who were harboring terrorists. So that was a problem. And of course, everybody knows we got Zoom bombed by Hitler's brother. I mean, um, that happened. And Council President Leteri came out with a great statement, but the statement was essentially, you know what? Hate has no home here. We don't, you know, we're against anti-Semitism, we're against Islamophobia, we're against... We had a chance as a council at that point to speak up against anti-Semitism. We failed. We failed. And take a look at the world now because the anti-Semitism in this world has blown up to levels we have not seen since the 1940s, okay? We failed. I'm not, I'm a member of the Jewish community. I'm not going to take it anymore. I want everybody to think about what we can do about anti-Semitism right now, okay? And that is the only reason why I am using my counselor privilege and putting this vote off two weeks. Because I want everybody to think about all the Jews in this town that have been affected by this.
Counselor DeMarco uses counsel privilege to put this off for two weeks. It will be on the June 4th, uh, agenda. Uh, this will end the discussion on this matter. Uh, back to Counselor DeRozan for Citizens Advisory Committee on Climate.
Yes, a motion that the Winthrop Town Council approved the creation of a Citizens Advisory Commission on Climate pursuant to the commission, uh, mission statement hereunder. And the mission statement reads, "Recognizing the immediate need for the creation of a comprehensive, informed, actionable, and dynamic climate resiliency and mitigation strategy to future-proof our seaside community of Winthrop. The Citizens Advisory Commission on Climate aims to support the town of Winthrop in accomplishing this task by serving as an advisory board to town officials through education, awareness, and recommended courses of action with the following goals at the center of its mission. First, baseline current climate-driven challenges for the town, including frequent flooding, storm surge, sea level rise, et cetera, and the resulting financial and other implications for the town and its residents. Two, synthesize recently documented research studies regarding these challenges and best practice recommendations on how to address them, including but not limited to the Resilient Mass Plan, the 2023 Massachusetts State Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaption Plan, uh, the climate section of the 2021 Wind 2030 Vision, Community Vision for Planning Study for the town, the 2017 Resilient Winthrop Designing Coastal Community Infrastructure for Climate Change Study that identified and prioritized critical vulnerable infrastructure issues and recommended mitigation and adaptation measures the town can take, plans established and actions taken by other municipalities in the greater Boston and other areas around the country and the world to integrate climate resiliency mitigation into their bylaws, sustainable zoning and development laws. Three, synthesize existing federal and state grants and other funding opportunities as well as agencies and consultative bodies to support action on these best practice recommendations, including but not limited to the Federal Inflation Reduction Act of 2022, the Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management, CZM, grants, and the Massachusetts Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, or MVP, program and the depart, from the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And finally, the commission would assist and inform the town manager, uh, the town planner, we hire one, and other such leaders in their efforts to work with federal, state, and local agencies to secure current and future grants to support our efforts. And if I could, uh, Mr. President, just one quick comment. Uh, going back to one or two town council meetings ago when I talked about our appreciation, and I know Counselor Swobbe shared this with me and we were recognizing Anna Larry, who I believe is also on the, on the Zoom tonight. Just recognize, folks, that people are putting in a lot of time, in their own personal time, to just contribute their expertise to these efforts. This commission would create a consistent, ongoing, well-informed approach. And frankly, just to, to make it simple, help with a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of research and making recommendations, you know, primarily to Tony as our town manager, but also to us as a council as to what we can do. Um, and, and kind of get us beyond the reactionary mode of dealing with the impacts to climate and really plan for the future.
Well, there's a motion on the table. Let's get a second. Second by Counselor, uh, DeMarco, uh, I'm sorry. Um, discussion on the motion. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to thank Counselor DeRozan. This is really great. We've heard a lot of feedback from many different constituents on many different fronts that, um, the town is greatly impacted by climate change and, and I think this is an absolute must to move in the right direction to keep Winthrop safe into the future. So thank you, very welcome.
Counselor Yello?
Same for me. Uh, just, uh, a wonderful initiative and every day that we go on and we've heard from others up front, the acceleration of the pace of climate change is, um, you know, is daunting. And we're a very vulnerable community and we're a community with, uh, not the resources we'd like to have for the schools, for everything else we try to do. And to think about the overlay, what we need to do in this town is, daunting as, as much as climate change itself. And so having the, sort of the best minds in this town, putting their heads together to not only think about what we need to do, but try to figure out how to get the funds and the money and make the case for dollars to come in from other places. Without our state and federal partners, we're never going to get to where we need to get. So, uh, this is an incredibly important strategic initiative. Thank you.
Counselor Swobbe.
Um, thank you, President Leteri. There are so many times that we have good ideas and we don't get them done. Uh, that's my impression. So if we can keep this on the agenda, get a starting plan and every week make some kind of contributions to making this happen. I'll be with you and, um, do what I can and I'm sure everybody else will too, but let's get a plan written so we can get it done. You know, so we can keep working on it.
Counsel, Counselor Manchin.
Uh, to that point, I was going to ask about the process next. So I'm 100% behind this. I think that there's a lot of legwork that needs to be, uh, allocated by smart, intelligent people. Um, I, I think this is a big, like you said, um, daunting task with lots of money, opportunities. Then the more people we can have on there with networks of their own to be able to help tap in and help Tony and the, and the team get it done. Wonderful initiative. So, but my question is, who, uh, you know, what's next? So let's say we, we get this passed, this motion gets passed, what's next? Who's, who's appointing who? How many people on the board?
If this is approved tonight, I will have a composition of the committee at our next scheduled meeting. I will ask the public tonight and in the future to try to submit applications if they're interested and we will go from there. And it will be a composition of, there will be one or two members from the council. There will be obviously members from the citizens from, you know, you're hoping as Counselor DeRozan said, you want to get people with an expertise in this area that might be able to help.
That's right. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Further discussion, seeing none. Others in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Public comment?
Yes, Celeste.
Celeste, may I review it? Precinct one. Um, Counselor DeMarco, I would like to, um, just address you directly, person to person. First of all, a little bit of my background. My family is very diverse. My stepmother is Jewish, my sister is African, my stepdaughter is Chinese. I'm a Portuguese Polack who grew up in Italian neighborhood. I, I understand, or I think I understand how you feel. Um, I think that your, um, your decision to, to call on council privilege is punitive, it's retaliatory, and it's aimed in the wrong direction, okay? People in the LGBTQ community have been under, um, attack since the beginning of time and they continue to be. And Council President Leteri, that small piece of fabric means a lot, whether it's the Israeli flag, the LGBTQIA flag, or any other that we all hold dear. And, you know, it is tantamount to freedom of speech, it's tantamount to representation. And I'm proud to announce that in East Boston this year, we'll be celebrating our 11th annual incident-free flag raising, pride flag raising. And that was born out of just a public, open, courageous statement by members of the LGBTQIA community who were daunted by living and choosing to live in East Boston because they had this perception of this, you know, overly macho, weirdo community that didn't accept them. And it was something that we just picked up on in just a side conversation on social media. And I said, you know, we can do that. We can raise a piece of fabric because it's a small symbol, it's a small olive branch that we can reach out and extend to our neighbors. We accept you, we appreciate you, you're welcome here, you're safe here. And, you know, the conversation about all these flags, and I remember that conversation. I've had some conversations on social media with a lot of folks. And quite frankly, I'll say it. I said, why don't we raise both flags? Why don't we raise the Israeli flag and the Palestinian flag side by side in honor of all of the victims? Because all of the folks that are victims in that region, and we're not going to solve peace in the Middle East today, but they're the victims of the decisions made at their government level and all of those that are complicit. And I think, I, I identify with how you feel. And it is, I think most of us do. I think most human beings, when you see babies and innocent victims, and it, it's been going back and forth my entire life and beyond that, right? Over five decades at this point. I encourage you to rethink your decision. I feel like it's retaliatory and I understand your pain and I wish I could help allay that in some way. But I encourage you to rethink that and consider the pain that folks have gone through today in, in other walks of life.
Since that was directed towards me, can I please respond?
No. Any other public comments? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe, uh, about a year and a half ago, you, well, you stated a couple of months ago that there was a, uh, intergovernmental affairs committee. So I did attend, uh, the last, um, or maybe the first meeting of this, uh, committee. And Max Tezneri is the chair. Susan Swobbe was on the committee, Joe Iello was on the committee. So Joe Iello expressed, um, that this, this should, this is an urgent case of getting, uh, information together to present to a mass water resource and, uh, mass port. There's been many figures, money figures, uh, expressed to me and others that, uh, this, uh, these two, uh, agencies could, would be in debt, uh, to us for about $50 million. Could be $20, could be $5. I don't, I don't know what that figure is. I was expressed that as a matter of urgency. To get this show on the road, so to speak. I suggested at, uh, that meeting, and I was, I'm going to stay with that, that it should be, uh, it should be a consultant or a mitigator hired by the town. Put out a request for interest in, in, in representing the town of Winthrop. I've looked into it a little bit, not a lot, but there's many people out there that are qualified to do this type of mitigation. Getting back to, uh, the meeting at hand, I'm quite sure I was there, but maybe not because, uh, at first, the, the committee was the, uh, governmental affairs. But now, when you look online, you don't find that anymore. Now it's the, uh, it's the governmental, uh, strategy committee. So I'm wondering where to get that, those minutes, uh, for that meeting. Right now, we've skipped the month of May, I guess. With all the urgency expressed by the people at that meeting, that we should be starting something and do it very quickly, now there's not a meeting held in, in May. I'm wondering when the next meeting is going to be and what is the name of the committee that, uh, is, is going to make this meeting? Is it affairs or is it strategic? And I'd like to get the minutes of that meeting. I think they were, uh, it was a pretty good meeting, even though I was the only one in the gallery at that point. Uh, so I'd like to see the minutes. I'd like to know when the next meeting's going to be. If we're so urgent that night, expressed by Mr. Iello, that we get all this information together to make a presentation, uh, for this money that's owed to us. for this money that's owed to us, and it could cover the next 20 years. It's a very important matter. It could be 20 million, it could be 30 million, it could be 40 or 50 million over the course of time. So I'd like to get busy on this committee, Max, and when you're going to have your next meeting?
June 4th.
For that, for that committee? Which committee is it?
I'll announce it in the public relations upcoming events. No public relations, excuse me, there's no back and forth here now, we will get back to you on that.
I'd like to know, because you said it was going to be fixed two months ago, whether it was affairs or strategic. I'd like to know which committee is going to represent the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Kathleen.
Okay, go ahead. Karina Campabasso, Crease in three. I just want to thank you all for voting in favor of establishing the Citizens Advisory Commission on Climate.
Thank you, Kathleen. Kathleen.
Hi, Kathleen Capucchio, 49, Walden Marab. I was just wondering, I'm not a technology or finance person, but when Tony was talking about how the planning board meetings that are not, that have been announced are going to be at the senior center, I was just wondering if it's possible for the council or for Tony to look into, or maybe you probably already have, how much money would it cost to get Zoom at the DiLeo Center? Again, I don't know, I'm sure you guys have already probably looked at that, but I was just curious if that's something, you know, that again has been looked at, or maybe it could be looked at again. I, I know money's of course tight, I just think, you know, especially with 3A, but also, you know, now with a potential override for the schools, to really increase engagement with every member of the community that would like to participate. You know, we do have some of our senior citizens or, you know, elderly people or people, frankly, you know, without financial, without enough financial means, that might not have an iPhone or might not be able to, might not have a computer, so I just think it would be great if, again, you guys could look into that and see, you know, how much could that cost? And again, maybe there could be a grant out there, you know, especially I'm thinking with MBTA 3A, you know, where they have grants with technical assistance, you know, this is something that, you know, maybe Secretary Augustus and, you know, Governor Haley would love to provide us with a grant, to be able to really thoroughly and openly and transparently discuss 3A. So again, if that could be looked into, I just was a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, yes.
Phil, Crease in five, just wanted to mention in case folks don't know this, that the Mass Port Board of Directors, they have two finalists for the CEO position. One of them's been here from Massachusetts, one's from Florida. They're expected maybe to vote on it even on this Thursday, so I think you have a new CEO, it might make sense at some point to have the town invite the new CEO to Winthrop and see the effects that we're experiencing.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Denise. Town Public Relations upcoming events, June 27th, Winthrop Public Library celebrates its 125th anniversary from 5 to 7. And the Winthrop farmer market dates for this year will be June 16th and 30th, July 14th and 28th, August 11th and 25th, September 8th and 22nd, and October 6th, Ingleside Park, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by?
Second.
I have a public event.
There is no public relations.
For Consuls right now, but I do understand that you want to announce a meeting at June 4th for the?
June 4th, 6:00 PM. I'll be meeting.
And there's a motion by Vice President Belcher, there's a second by Consul Swope, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.